Find parcel by section, township, range, subdivision, lot, block, lot. So every parcel had this long dashed number. So customers would come in and then they had two books. And one book was the LDC. And the other book was this big map broken down into small maps. Each section had a page. And that was the official zoning map for the county. And the zoning districts were drawn in by a Sharpie years ago by whoever was before me. And it was before GIS Digital Maps. So someone would come in the office, they would point on the big map on the glass table. And then we'd flip through the book and see what the Sharpie said their zoning was. And then they'd ask questions about it and I'd go in the LDC. I didn't even know what LDC was. So they would ask me a question, I'd have to wander through the building and find an answer. And so I went to my boss and I was like, I don't know the answer to any question. I don't know what I'm doing. And she said, just learn one thing, learn the answer to one question a day. And then at the end of the year, you know the answer to 300 questions. So that's my whole time story for the day.
Ah, yay. There's something on the History Channel and they're talking about back in the day when you were a surveyor. This was all about Thomas Jefferson and kind of his family and his history. But when you were a surveyor, that was how you acquired all the wealth is because you were surveying the land. And then it would be sold and something would be developed. And so they were in on the whole process. It was just kind of interesting to listen to the history from way back when and surveyors and how.
So I went from, that was in Florida, North Florida where that first job was. And section township range is unique to Florida because it came so late in the Union as like Louisiana Purchase. So then I went up to Georgia and Georgia's different. They're all based on King's Grants and every property goes back to the King signing a grant to someone and letting them start a farm. So no section township range there, no grids.
You ready? All right, we're ready now, okay. Good morning, this is the Impact Workshop for the Citrus County Impact Fees. And to get started this morning, one of my favorite individuals in the world is Jason Hopes. And he's going to come lead us in the invocation. And Mr. Sanders is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could come forward.
Let's bow our heads. Fathers, we come before you today, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this great county, Citrus County, Father, and the people that live in it, God. And as we conduct business today, Father, we ask that it be done with a heart for Citrus County, Father, and the betterment of each one that lives here. Let the business be done decently and order, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, this is a public workshop of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This is 29th day of July, 2025. In attendance are Chair Rebecca Bays, First Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Jana Barrett, Commissioner Jeff Canard, Commissioner Holly Davis, Assistant County Administrator Maricel Rodriguez, and Assistant County Attorney Kimberly Harrison. Thank you. We're going to move right in, I guess, to the PowerPoint by Mr. Landon.
Yes, Chair, I'm going to happily hand off the baton this time to Peter with Stantec, who is our consultant that did all the background work. So I've received a lot of feedback, questions, comments over the last month or so as we've been working on this. And I fed all those questions to Peter and I think he's prepared hopefully to answer any questions that you may have. But I'll hand it off to him and let him take it from here.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Peter Napoli, based in Tampa, Florida. I work for Stantec Consulting. And one of our specialties is impact fee studies. But we help counties, cities, all across the state of Florida with all types of rates and fees and financial forecasting. So we were tasked with updating the county's impact fee program and impact fee schedule, including the school board's impact fee. So we have a presentation for you today that summarizes the assumptions and the comparisons and the calculations behind the impact fee study and all that went involved in it. And it's high level because we didn't want to get too in the weeds. But if there's anything that you want more information on, you want me to delve into a little further detail, I'd be happy to do so. And I don't know if you guys prefer to ask questions during or wait till the end, but either is fine with me, so.
This board, I think, typically likes their questions answered during the presentation. So we're going to go on that assumption, if not, we'll bombard you at the end.
All right. So without further ado, I'll start off the presentation. So just a little background on impact fees, because sometimes it's a long time. I know this county specifically has looked at their impact fees somewhat recently, back in 2021. So you guys all probably know a good bit about impact fees. But in some places, they go decades without looking at their impact fees. So it's important to just kind of briefly go over what they are and what they're designed to do. They're designed to charge growth, essentially to capture the cost of growth. So we like to say growth would pay its own way with a properly designed impact fee. So it is only charged once, a one-time charge to new development. So residential and non-residential new development occurring in the county. It's charged typically around the time of building permit issuance. And it's designed to capture the impact on the county's facilities and infrastructure and services that the growth will place. Because currently, the county is designed to serve your existing population with every new household or new subdivision or new warehouse, new business. You'll have to expand your services incrementally and there's a cost associated with that. If impact fees aren't in place, what happens is two things can potentially happen. Either the services don't get expanded or infrastructure doesn't get expanded. So over time, you work with the same assets, but you serve a bigger and bigger population. So your level of service goes down. Or you do fund those new facilities for growth, but you use another revenue source. If the impact fees aren't in place, you would use property taxes, general revenues. You could rely on grants and federal state funding for certain projects or use rates and fees. They need to be accounted for in a separate fund, so the money can't just be combined with the other accounting balances, like the general fund and the other revenue funds. And they have to be used to pay for only capital facilities. So you can't use it to hire new people, you can't pay for renewal and replacement even. You have to buy new capital facilities that are expansion related. So a new building for law enforcement or a new fire station, et cetera. So the county currently charges eight impact fees and they're based, most recently updated in a 2021 study. They include EMS, fire, law enforcement, libraries, parks and rec, public buildings, schools, and transportation. And these are all very common impact fees charged at the county level around the state. Our scope was to recalculate these fees. So this is the current table and we just picked a few representative land use classes. But there's a more expanded schedule with more land uses. So what we're showing here is single-family, multifamily, mobile home park, and then retail and commercial. These are all your current fees as updated in 2021. The residential fees, so single-family and multifamily scale by dwelling unit. Single-family obviously would just be one dwelling unit. But multifamily, apartment complexes, townhomes, duplexes, depending on how many units there are, they pay that times the fee. So if it's a 100-unit apartment complex, they'd pay 100 times the fee. These are the current fees. So the total for single-family, if you follow that column down, is about $8,000 per single-family home, capturing all these different service departments. Multifamily is about 4,000, a mobile home unit is about 5,000, and then retail commercial is 3,600. The retail commercial gets charged per thousand square feet. So the bigger the, and that's the same for all non-residential categories. So the bigger the non-residential development, the more they'll pay, it scales with the fee. There's a couple of fees that the non-residential class does not, is not subject to. Those are the libraries, parks and recreation, and schools. And it's because they don't have a direct impact on those services when they're constructed in the county.
Commissioner Barrett.
I want to make sure I understand this.
Yes, ma'am.
From that chart, the single-family total was 79.49.
Yes.
Multifamily, you said, was like duplexes on up through apartments. So the 4,049 is for each individual living unit in that complex?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, because I wanted to make sure I was right on that. So if it's a duplex, it's eight grand as opposed to if it's a single-family home, it's eight grand.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, it looks like we're back up. So this is, this is the more expanded schedule. So now you could see all the categories currently adopted by the county. We're not recommending any changes to your current land use categories for charging these impact fees. They're, it's a good list. It sometimes will recommend, the county has too long of a list. They'll have a specific fee for every type of land use under the sun. You have to kind of generalize it a little bit because administratively it gets really burdensome to have a huge schedule. But I think this is a good list. So what we're doing is recommending that you keep the current structure and the way you charge the impact fees, per dwelling unit and per thousand square feet for non-residential. All of that is standard, standard accepted industry standards. So this is just a survey to show you where the current, the county currently sits with all those impact fees for the single-family, just using single-family as a comparison. So you see that you're down there at 79.49, the average is around 1200 or 12,700. What isn't shown here is there's, there's a lot that goes behind these fees. It's a policy decision at the county level to adopt any amount of cost recovery. What that means is what we are, what we're tasked with doing is calculating the maximum that you can charge in impact fees. If you charged a dollar more than what we calculated, then you would be at risk because our calculations don't support that. But from a policy standpoint, a county can adopt, okay, we can adopt the impact fees at 25% cost recovery, 50%, 75%. So a lot of these other counties, they may have lower cost recovery levels, the ones that are behind Citrus County. And then another thing is that a lot of them have, working around the state, a lot of counties are looking at increasing their impact fees right now. And they may have already enacted increases that don't take effect until future years. So that's one other thing that you don't see in the survey.
Commissioner Barrett.
Okay, I have a question. When I look at all these things on page four or page five, the different categories. Okay, we're looking at possibly doing mixed-use buildings. Where on the first floor is commercial and on the second floor is rentals or residential. I don't see that category in here. Can we add that category or am I just missing it and I don't see what I'm talking about?
That's a good question, Commissioner. So what you would do is with the, with a mixed-use property, say the first floor was all retail commercial. That square footage would fall under that category and get charged. If it was 5,000 square feet, they'd get the fee times five. And then if there were 100 apartment units above it, then they would pay the 100 apartment units times the multifamily rate. So it would be a mixture of both the fees on the fee schedule to get to that ultimate impact fee that they would be charged.
Okay, so it would be a combination property is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on this slide.
The survey slide?
Yes. Some of these appear to be very low from my understanding. I know Marion County just had a rate increase. Do you happen to know what that is?
I'm not sure.
And Pasco County is more like 26, $27,000.
There, I just worked with Pasco County on a couple of their fees. These should be, they might reflect 2024 numbers because we started this study a while back now. And it could be that they adopted some increases. I know that they just increased fire and EMS because I worked with them on that one. And then I think their parks impact fee just went up. But, but yeah, it is, it's kind of hard to keep track of the, there's a lot, been a lot of impact fee increases around the state.
And I know, I think Hernando just had an increase.
Correct, yeah.
And then sometimes I think this can be very disparaging because if you take Sumter County, they look very low, but they have a lot of other fees built in rather than impact fees. So it, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison.
No, it's not, and that's a good point. They could be subs, they could be funding the facilities they need with a higher mileage rate from a property tax standpoint. Or like I said, there's two things that could happen. Either you're, you're, you're funding the facilities that you need for growth or you're not funding them. And if you're funding them, you could be funding them in partially offsetting that cost with impact fees or fully funding it with general revenues and, and the current property tax dollars in the county. But what that is essentially doing is asking your existing residents to, to pay towards the cost of growth.
And for clarification, for those in the audience and those, I think everybody here understands that, but maybe those watching from home, if you were looking at Sumter County, the villages are completely different. So it's not really in this mix. So all those services, everything that they're receiving doesn't necessarily reflect in this impact fee. So I just want to make, and maybe you can touch on that, just so everybody says, oh my gosh, we're looking at the villages and they have all these services and their impact fees are low. So can you just touch on that?
So, so if there's any municipalities or CDDs or any type of entities within the county that provides its own service, so if they build their own roads, have their own fire department, have their own parks, et cetera, they are not then subject to fees at the county level, they, they provide their own services. So the villages is a good example because we just did a study with Wildwood. And the city of Wildwood's, you know, boundaries encompass a certain part of the villages. They don't charge any development in the villages a parks and rec impact fee because the villages provide all their own parks and rec facilities for their residents and it's pretty encapsulated.
They're paying for it, it's just a different mechanism.
Yeah, exactly, through a different way, you know, through their annual district fees or they may have their own impact fees within the villages, I'm not sure. But, and that's an interlocal agreement thing too, that they may have. So that is, that's, that's important to point out. So I wanted to briefly go over some reforms to the Florida impact fee law. It's, these aren't as new as it used to be, but this was enacted in 2021. There was change to the Florida state statutes. There's a section of the statutes that governs impact fees essentially and tells local governments how you should calculate them, how they should be charged, how they should be collected. They added an additional section to this part of the statute that says there's now phase-in limitations on impact fee increases. And essentially what it says is that from zero, if, if before this, say a city or a county had an impact fee study like the county just had done, and the consultant or firm recommended, this is the 60% increase in this rate based on our calculations, the county would just adopt it or the city would just adopt it. Now what they're doing is they put a limit on what you can adopt for impact fee increases. But then they kind of open up a loophole for that as well. They say that you can exceed these limitations if you meet these certain requirements. One is a demonstrated need study that outlines the extraordinary circumstances behind going above and beyond the phase-in limitations on increases. Number two is two publicly noticed workshops. And number three is a two-thirds approval or supermajority approval from the commission. So if all those three requirements are satisfied, you can increase your impact fees according to the study that you had done. Not just, you know, to whatever the commission wants, but if you have a study that outlines, based on this calculation, this is what the fee should be, that you can follow that. So in the case of Citrus County, we're recommending that you consider adopting or the full increase on the impact fees that we're going to present in this presentation. We've done the demonstrated need study. We looked at the three main areas. It's usually, it's typically population growth and a lot of places in Florida qualify for this. We're, we have extraordinary growth in Florida, pretty much all over the state. Cost of inflation, so when you had this study done, it was in 2021. And that study, I mean, these are always backwards looking. You're looking, looking at the last three to five years. It did not take into consideration the type of inflation that we've experienced from 2020 to 2025. So I'll show you all those reasons and ultimately it's up to the commission's decision which direction you want to go in. So the first one, population growth, this chart here shows and tracks the population growth since 2005. And then we've highlighted in that orange box there, the time that has occurred since 2020, when the impact, last impact fee study was performed. The green represents citrus, so an average of 10.8, almost 11% growth in that time period, the, the most recent time period versus the national average, which is shown by the blue, of about 2.5%. And then we also included the southeast region in the black, which is in between. But this shows that this is extraordinary growth occurring in Citrus County and that it's exceeded the regional and national averages. And with extraordinary growth, extraordinary demands on services occur and extraordinary demands on expansion of facilities and infrastructure. So that's why these two things are so related and important to make that connection. Another look at growth, but more so development, is the housing units that have been permitted. And this chart shows since 2010, the housing units that are permitted in the county. You can see that the average, so what the study would have been based on in 2021 is that, that collection of housing permits there, the first gray area, 2016 to 2020. The average annual permits in that timeframe was about 991. Then we look at the last five years in the orange, the average units permitted are 1,910. So that's almost 100% increase in the annual housing permits that are issued in the county. So it's a great indicator that there has been extraordinary growth in the county. And then finally, the cost increases. This is the CPI, tracks the cost of consumer products and averages over, it's an index. So this chart here shows since 2015 how the CPI has behaved. And it's specifically for the Tampa-St. Pete Clearwater region that we've tracked here. So the green is the, that Tampa-St. Pete Clearwater region. The, you'd call it south-central Florida essentially. And the orange average is 26%. So that's the last five years. That's a 26% increase in the CPI or in the cost of goods and services for the Tampa-St. Pete Clearwater region. The last five years, the five years that the last study was based on, had a 10% increase. So you can see that how significant of a difference in the way costing, the cost of goods have inflated over the last five years than the previous five years. And then another way to look at it is how does that compare to the US average for inflation? Is Citrus County in this region experiencing even more inflation than the rest of the country? And that is true. So in the blue is the, the US average of CPI inflation and the green is this region. So not only are we seeing extraordinary levels of inflation countrywide, in the region, we've seen even further inflation. So those pressures are also going towards the extraordinary circumstances that the county's experienced. So that concludes kind of the extraordinary circumstances section. Now we'll get into the updated calculations of the county's existing fees. So this chart here is, it's a lot to look at because what it has is it has six of the different fees. So we have EMS, fire, law enforcement, libraries, parks, and public buildings. These are all what we call the general governmental fees. And they all have a similar way, we all have a similar methodology of calculating them. It's based on your existing capacity that's calculated by functional population. So we look at the amount of people in the houses, the amount of people frequenting businesses. Basically, it's a way of calculating the service area for each of these different services. And the, the first column in the blue is the cost basis. So for each of these different fees, what we did is we looked at the fixed assets. What has the county invested in providing service for this specific department? And what facilities are in place? So for EMS, it's what, you know, what share of the stations, what vehicles, what ambulance, what, what major equipment they have in place that the county has invested in? What was the cost of that? And then what was the replacement cost of it? So, or what is the replacement cost of it? If today you had to replace that building or if you had to replace those vehicles, how much would it cost? We do a similar operation for each of these. EMS, 7.6 million divided over a capacity of 127,000 calculates a fee of $77. And this is just a single-family fee. There's a, the rest of the fees are calculated proportionally. And that's a 24% increase over the existing fee rate. I'm, I don't know, you want me to go through each one of these one by one, but some things I'd like to point out. So the fire, we had included growth in that fire because there was actually some capital projects. So for impact fee calculations, if you have expansion-related capital projects in your plan, you can include the cost of that. But then you have to include the growth as well that's serving so that you're not just putting it all on the new development. You're including the additional capacity that it's adding and the existing capacity. Some other things to point out, law enforcement included the correctional facilities, but it included it at the capacity currently, currently used. So it's not, they're not at 100% capacity. So that is a way of discounting the fee, acknowledging that there's some additional capacity in that correctional facility. Libraries, parks and recreation, these ones are residential only. And then I think the, I think that's the only other ones that I wanted to point out. I think parks and recreation, they have a lower capacity number because there's a municipality that's not included in that parks and recreation calculation. But, so for each of these fees, they range, if you look on the right-hand side, you could see the increase that the calculated fee is compared to the existing fee. They're generally within range for a five-year update. They're not, none of these really pop off the page. Some, some of the other things I'd want to point out that go into the credits so that we make sure that we're not double-charging or overcharging new development. Anything that was grant-funded, anything that was donated, anything that had a funding source from outside of the county that the county didn't have to actually pay for with its own general revenues, those were removed. Anything that was, anything typically that's sales tax funded, but I don't believe the county has a, an infrastructure sales tax here. But those are some dedicated funding sources we remove from the calculation. So the next two are the more complicated ones with the more complicated calculation. I'll start with schools here. So schools, the, the idea is that we're trying to figure out the student generation rate for each one of the land uses. Again, this is only charged to residential. So just thinking about single-family, on average, how many school-aged children, if a new house comes into the county, how many school-aged children are they generating or adding to the system so that the, now the school system can respond and expand its facilities to, to, to include these new students? So that's the idea behind it. The cost is looking at the cost of all the facilities across the school board and what they've invested in, the different facilities, even including buses. And then the existing fee on, on the right-hand side in the gray is $2,000. What we're calculating is about $5,300. That's 157% increase. But what's important to point out is that in 2021, the consultant calculated a fee of 4,000. But what's important to point out is that in 2021, the consultant calculated a fee of $4,000 and the county chose to adopt, or the school board, I guess in conjunction with the county, chose to adopt 50% cost recovery. So the fee currently represented at $2,000 is half of what you could have been charging. And it was a policy decision made at the time to adopt it at 50%.
Commissioner Davis?
Just a point of clarification. I'm not saying one way or another what I would be interested in. But are age restricted, do not pay?
Correct.
And is that a state mandate or?
That is, that's kind of an industry standard because so typically these age restricted communities, they're not generating students. But they will, you know, they'll, they're still subject to the property taxes and the school district taxes on their tax bill. So in a way they are contributing, but they're not creating an additional impact. And the impact fees only to capture that additional impact on facilities and services, not to fund any ongoing operations or, or funding for the schools.
That makes complete sense. So thank you.
Okay. Yeah, you're welcome. So yeah, I just really wanted to, 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 to stress that point that when you compare the calculated school impact fee compared to what was calculated in 2021, it's actually a 29% increase. So the 157% is a big scary number, but it's because it's at a 50% cost recovery. The transportation impact fee is all based on vehicle miles of travel and the cost per vehicle mile of travel. So what that means is looking at each type of development and understanding how many more vehicle miles are they going to add on to the county's road system? If, you know, if it's a, something like a drive-through, you can imagine that's a lot more road miles of cars driving on the roads versus a furniture store, for example, that, you know, gets frequented by visitors every so often. All of this comes from the ITE Trip Generation Manual. It's a transportation engineer standard in, in the country. And they have a survey that measures how often vehicles leave, come and leave certain places. They do a survey asking, where are you going? Where are you coming from? And it gives you an idea of how often these types of businesses and residential homes and multifamily, how often they put vehicle miles on the road. All that goes into the calculation of this and summarizing it for single family is that they generate about 35 vehicle miles per single family unit, vehicle miles of travel per day. The net road cost per VMT, when we look at, what we did was we looked at the county's most recent roadway expansion project, I believe it's County Road 491. How much did it cost and how much capacity did that project add? And then we deduct a bunch of things. We deduct any, any, any debt funding or for previous projects, we give a credit for that. So the outstanding principle on existing transportation projects. We deduct anything from gas taxes or fuel taxes that are contributed towards these projects. And then also the state and federal grant funding that's awarded towards these roadway projects. The goal is to, to, to get a number that represents the county's costs of expanding their roads for growth. Because with new developments, obviously they place a pressure on the existing roadway. It's not a resurfacing, it can't be used towards resurfacing or renewal and replacement.
Commissioner Canard?
I apologize for interrupting you, but that's a que, I wanted to ask a question about the transportation and the deduction of funding sources. 491 has obviously been our most recent road expansion project. And it seems like that the, the cost of that project is being pushed artificially low because of the state, the state funding that went into it. It's a very expensive project. Thankfully, we got a lot of money out of Tallahassee for that. But that doesn't change the fact that that project, in the end, you know, the two phases together were, you know, just spitballing here, say 60, 70 million dollars. But if you take out all the state funding and all the gas tax funding for it, you know, that, that's going to look like a number that may be $40 million, which then in turn pushes that impact fee, that transportation impact fee lower. Now what we do know, what Tallahassee has been very clear about is that the money's flowing out of Tallahassee for these projects is decreasing. Gas taxes are decreasing. DOT is finally acknowledging at this point that the, the, the gas tax revenue that's coming into the state is not sufficient to build out these roads. And so what we're doing, I believe, and, and I've already said that I'm going to support the, the proposed impact fee increase. But even, even as much of an increase as this is, with decreased state funding in the future, decreased gas tax funding in the future, this impact fee is not going to be enough to do another road like 491. We are not going to have those funding sources because this cost number has been artificially pushed down. So I hope that this board will keep, keep that in mind. My, my next question is when you're calculating the cost of these roads, is it just the construction? Are you including right-of-way acquisition into that cost as well? That's a major part of it.
Yeah, I believe right-of-way and acquisition was included in the costs. But again, it was, to go back to your previous question too, the state and federal funding were taken out. It's, it's more of a, with the, these impact fee studies, it's more of a representing what happened. We can't, we can't ignore what actually happened. But, and that's why I'd recommend looking, relooking at these fees within the next three to four years very soon because federal-state funding sources are drying up and there's more, they're more restrictive. It's just hard for us to predict the impact of that now and, and, and hard to predict what the funding available would be for the county. So we just have to base it on historically what the funding was and just assume that that's going to keep going status quo. And until it doesn't, then we can factor that into the calculation in the future.
Well, I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative here, but we can predict what it's going to be. It's going to be significantly higher than what you've got in here for your, your cost estimation, what it's going to take to build roads. And so what you're proposing is that we, the impact fee that you're proposing is already too low to build our next road project. That the state has said the funding's going to decrease. DOT, the authority in this area has said the funding is going to decrease. They're looking for the counties to have more skin in the game when we look at building out these roads. And we've got roads that need to be built out. So again, I'm going to, I'm going to support what, what's proposed here, but I do think that the calculation is flawed. Now, I would like for you to confirm for us, doesn't have to be right now, but pretty quickly, that right-of-way acquisition was included in the, in the cost of building out these roads. Because my understanding is that, is that either one or two of the previous impact fee studies didn't include right-of-way acquisition, which is a major part of building out these roads. Not just the property itself, but obviously the whole eminent domain process of paying everybody's attorneys that, that seem to be involved at a high price. So I would like to know for sure that the cost that you're using here for our roads does in fact include acquisition of right-of-way.
Yes, sir. I'll follow up with you on that. We'll look at the, we have a breakout of the, the project that we use, the, the County Road 491 project and the different costs and funding sources. And I'll make sure, I'll also check, because I did see that in the last study, that right-of-way I wasn't included. So I'll just double check if there is anything weird in the statutes or maybe in industry standards that's a, right-of-way shouldn't be. I'm pretty sure I've seen it in other places where right-of-way has been included. So anyway, I'll follow up with you on that. And I would also, you know, agree with you in that currently the cost is depressed by those state and federal funding sources. So there absolutely is an opportunity for the impact fee on the transportation side to be reevaluated in the future and go up. I've seen transportation impact fees as high as 9, 10,000 per single-family home. So we can help you with that in the future or you can go any route that, you know, the commission decides. But I, I would agree to that point.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you calculate inflationary assumptions into this?
So what? Yes and no. I would actually no. So it's based on the current cost. So I, we used to update impact fees, right? And, and be able to advise the counties and cities that we work with that you can adopt the current fees, they adopt the current day cost per unit of capacity and then adopt some kind of inflation or, you know, some automatic inflationary increase. That whether it follows the CPI, people would put it in their ordinances, that these impact fees will follow the CPI from this day on and increase according to that. Now, because of the state laws around impact fee increases, it's much harder to do that. In the law, it says if you don't go through this whole extraordinary thing, extraordinary circumstances thing every year, you can only adopt an increase once every four years. And then you have to phase in that increase based on what the increase is. So I would say no, the, the current impact fees that we're calculating reflect current day costs. I, I would, a, a positive note is that inflation isn't out of control as it used to be. And I think then a lot of people are predicting that it is maintained kind of at a steady level. So we won't see that, when we looked at that one chart where the lines went way up and you had 26% inflation over a five-year period, I don't believe that's going to happen again. It could, and the county would have to, you know, update the impact fees to reflect it. But for now, the, it reflects current day dollars and it's very hard to factor in an inflation increase because someone could argue, oh, were you charging us impact fees based on the cost that you're predicting five years from now? Or are you charging us the impact fees based on the current day cost?
Well, when you're doing capacity, it takes a long time to get that across the finish line. For instance, I know 491 right now, the last seven miles, that's two lane. If we, if it were shovel-ready, it would cost us $180 million to go out and finish that road. If you look at our CIP, it's 300-plus million dollars because you're adding in the time value of money, the inflationary. So that, that concerns me a little bit because I, I mean, if it were shovel-ready, we'd still have to go out and do the PD, you know, well, I guess that wouldn't be shovel-ready. But we'd, at this point, we'd still have to do PD and E and that still takes time. You'd still have to calculate the rest of it. So I, that seems counterintuitive to me. The other thing, when you're, when you were excluding gas tax. So we have all these electric cars on the road that are not using gas, but they're heavier and they have more wear and tear on the road. Is there an assumption for that?
No, it's, gas tax is typically excluded because it's a dedicated funding source for roadway projects. So in the same way that if you had an infrastructure sales tax, we would remove that for certain capital projects or the funding that it would contribute, we have to recognize that the gas tax does contribute a certain amount of money to county roadway projects. And then we don't want to double charge or overcharge new development because they will contribute to that as they will contribute to property taxes and all the other sources.
And that goes clearly to my point. So you have the gas cars that are contributing, but you have EV cars that are not contributing.
It's, that's a, that's a refinement that I haven't seen made yet in impact fee studies where gas tax is adjusted for future EV purchasing. It's something that we can look into. I think it might be hard to find industry sources for that, but we'll look. And, and absolutely, I see the point you're making that they're not contributing towards a funding source. They're on the road. The wear and tear though, is something that it, it's not technically, this isn't technically for wear and tear. The wear and tear is renewal and replacement, refurbishment, the re, resurfacing of roads. This is just to capture that this development's going to put 1,000 more cars on the road and now we're going to need a new lane, something like that.
And, and the wear and tear is really not my point. The point is that those cars are heavier. So when, as you put them on the road, they do have an impact even at the initial construction stage.
Yes, ma'am. So this next fee schedule here.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm sorry, just a point of clarification before you get started on this slide. I believe the third and fourth line, nope, the next slide, sorry. The third and fourth line should not actually be indented, correct? They're not, they're not sub to ADU.
Accessory dwelling unit. Yeah, I'm not sure why the formatting happened like that.
Okay, because I, I got a little confused there.
Sorry about that, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's, they're all separate categories. There's no, I mean, they're technically subcategories of single-family. Maybe that's why they're indented and they should be above.
But it's under ADU, so it looks like it's a subcategory of ADU.
Under ADU.
Multifamily, age restricted is a subcategory of multifamily though.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So this shows your expanded fee schedule. So all the different categories or land use categories where you would evaluate new development and place them into one of these categories. And that's how you would charge their fee and figure out what fee they would owe the county. We put this in here because what we're doing is we're, the calculation looks at all of the factors that go into each of these categories. So there's actually increases, the increases aren't flat. So the increases that I was showing you before were just for single-family where an increase for the transportation fee is 34% for single-family. It varies depending on what category we're looking at. It's just a whole lot to put out there for you to review. But I highlighted some of the big increases. Schools, obviously they are increasing across the board a lot because they're at a low cost recovery currently. But multifamily is actually increasing 200% rather than the 150% of, of single-family. Transportation, some of the demand or the, the traffic generation statistics that we updated affected the non-residential categories. So they're actually increasing much more than what we're seeing the increase for single-family. So that's highlighted in that bottom right corner. You can see the retail, commercial, office, industrial, warehouse. The statistics that show what kind of traffic they're going to generate when they're built were updated and the increases are actually much higher than that 34% increase you're seeing for single-family. So, so really when you, it's a whole lot to look at. Each category is kind of going up at a different level depending on what statistics and calculations are behind the scenes. We do have a more comprehensive report that will be available to the commission for you to review to see how these calculations work. But it is a whole lot to review in a, the presentation.
Commissioner Davis?
Could you remind me what the definition of low income is in this particular context?
Oh, that is outlined in the report. It has to do with, there is a specific threshold of family base, family income in comparison to the, or maybe it's low income, maybe it was restricted for that, like affordable housing units. I have to look, there's a, there's a specific definition of it and I can't recall off the top of my head. But I believe what the idea is that it, it's for affordable housing units that are being built and that meet, there's state statutes, right, for affordable housing. They have to meet certain requirements and that those same units would then be subject to this impact fee.
Because a, a lot of residents get worried about low-income housing. You know, we, we talk more in terms of workforce and attainable housing because we need to provide that for the folks that are in their twenties and just starting out in the workforce. So I'm, I'm just going to say that I am a little, I see this as an opportunity not just to build out the infrastructure that we need. And my colleagues have brought up some very good concerns about it's not going to be enough. But I also see it as an opportunity to change our trajectory on our demographics in this county as we grow because we want more high-wage jobs, we want more young folks to move here. Please, if you're listening, make no mistake, I am age restricted, age myself. At some point, I'm going to retire. Those folks that are already here in this county that are in that category, we want to take care of you. I want to take care of you. But I don't want to keep encouraging seniors to retire here as much as we are. We need workforce housing and I'm really concerned about the level of impact on multifamily for that reason. So that's one way to take care of our seniors is to make sure we have, you know, paramedics, EMTs. EMTs, young firefighters, young teachers who are educating the folks that are going to take care of the folks that are seniors, you know, and the nurses and all the nurses, nursing aides and things like that. So it's, um, it's an ecosystem, and we need to pay attention to that. So that's the one impact fee. The age-restricted, uh, single-family and the low-income, single-family and multifamily, those are the ones that I'm I'm looking at. I really think that we should look, these are my comments to the board, I think we should look at some strategic ones where we maybe don't go the full amount simply because of what we were trying to build here. So, thank you.
So I have a question. Are you saying under school impact fees that there, the cost for the school impact fee on a multifamily would be 202%?
The increase from the existing fee.
So if it was at a flat 100%, what would that number be?
So the school impacts fee for multifamily is 3,100 per unit, where you can see that kind of in the middle right, under the school impact fee column. The the fee for single-family is 5,300. Again, this was based on statistics behind student generation. So this is representative of the estimated student generation per living unit in a multifamily development. The, if the increase, I can't advise the commission to to push certain increases down and leave others the same because then you mess with the proportionality of these fees, and then it kind of opens you up to challenge. If if one fee is, you know, given it, you know, the favoritism over another or one category.
But that looks like favoritism. I mean, you've got single-family and accessory dwelling units on schools at 157%, the low-income 157%, the multifamily at 202%, and mobile homes 147%, where you look at the transportation impact fees, and they're significantly less. I mean, the only thing that we have over 100% on transportation is the retail and commercial. So I, I mean, if you were going to equalize those out where we're at 100% across the board, that's a significant difference in the the fees.
Yeah, again, I would say it's just because of the statistics that we updated in the in the background. When we looked at the student generation rate and followed the calculation for that and updated the industry sources, the student generation for multifamily increased. So, and it could be, I mean, when we step back and think about what are the factors behind that, it could be that more families are living in multifamily units now, so there's more school-aged children moving in to multifamily units once they're developed because of the price of housing. It could be a number of things, but I assure you, we're not choosing or, you know, forcing cost on one category versus the other. It's just following the procedure and following the calculation, and that's the result we got. And then I would, just want to remind you, too, that all of those increases for schools look so high because the school impact fee is currently at a 50% cost recovery. If we were to compare it to the 2021 numbers, these would be more like 40, 50% increases rather than that huge increase that you're seeing.
Commissioner Barrett.
That was one of the questions I was wondering. The school impact fees currently are at the 50%. Are these charts and these numbers you're throwing at us bringing the school impact fees up to 100%? And that's maybe why it's a 202 instead of 101.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. This, the, this fee schedule here reflects 100% cost recovery of all the impact fees. And if the county were to decide to, uh, lower the cost recovery for any of these fees, I'd just recommend you do it across the board.
So what I'm saying is, like, you've got to lower 50%, well, you've got to bring it up to the 100, and then you're going to double it, so that's why you're getting up to 202.
Correct.
Okay, so I I understood that. I also had a question about the low income, just like Commissioner Davis. Okay, so you're saying on a single-family home for low income, uh, single-family detached low income, you're going to, if we agree with these, the fee would be $10,086, which is 69.5% change, as opposed to a single-family home would be $13,109, which is only a 64.9%. Do you, do you see what I'm saying in that, on that sheet? Okay. Why are we, the low income, being charged a higher percent? Okay, in other words, low income, from what I understand, are people that buy habitat houses because they have met the government restrictions and limitations for funding. In other words, this is how much money they got coming in, so this is what, you know, they can afford, and it's a habitat home. For us to be tacking additional $10,086, in other words, for impact fees, that's going to really do a lot of damage to low-income and affordable housing.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I I don't see where you're getting the 10,000.
Top chart, line one, two, three, line four, proposed tax impact fee per unit, which is the next-to-last column.
Yeah, we've got 9310 here, which is an increase of 56%.
I'm on page eleven, or on page 13, are you on page 13?
Yes.
Does it?
Mine says 10,086, it's 69.5%.
Okay, maybe this is more, maybe that, maybe that was an older version of it.
It's the one I got last week.
Well. We'll double-check if it, the.
So yours says how much? Nine thousand?
9,300, so it's a difference of $700.
Okay, so that's going to bring it below the 69.5%?
Yes.
Okay. I thought I had the right book.
It's just if, might be that one number got updated. There's a lot of iterations of these PowerPoints. If it were, whatever is in the ultimate report, if, I'll double-check with that one. But either way, it's a difference of 60-plus percent versus 56%.
Can you zoom out on that so that we can run down our numbers and see if they all look the same?
Madam Chair, the one that we're voting on, if you look in the beginning, it has the schedule and it has what he has put up there on that number. To look to where the agenda men, Miranda, where the ordinance actually is, the exhibit attached to the ordinance is the numbers on the screen. May I ask him a question?
Yes, Commissioner Finnegan.
Uh, another commissioner had, uh, it was specifically Commissioner Kennard had asked you about the transportation fees about right-of-way acquisition, and you said that you would get back to him. Do you mean today while this is going on?
Yeah, I, I, we have, I have staff here with me that have the models.
If it didn't include that, would this number then be incorrect that we are to vote on?
It would be more, so in a sense, it's not a risk to the county in that it would just be a higher fee that you could charge, so you wouldn't be.
I guess who's determining the risk? Listening to the commissioner, the risk would be not having the accurate number because we'd be woefully behind. So I'm, I just wanted to make sure before we vote that you would answer that question.
And and the commission will be voting at 1 at the public hearing?
Yes.
I'll, I'll be here for that, too, and in the meantime, I'll make sure that I get that confirmation to you.
Okay, thank you.
So this next slide here just kind of summarizes the projected revenue for the county based on the growth expectations. We got these growth numbers from the long-range transportation plan, which was just recently completed last October. So there's different growth expectations for single-family, multifamily, mobile home, art, retail, commercial, office, industrial, warehouse, and this is over a 25-year period. So we just looked at that growth that is expected over that 25-year period, how much revenue is calculated based on the proposed fees versus how much revenue would be calculated based on the county's existing fees. It's $100 million difference over a 25-year period. Another thing I'd like to point out, and this is conservative in that this assumes that you'd keep these proposed fees for 25 years, which more likely the county will look at their impact fee schedule every three, four, five years and update them. So the revenue difference would, would be, would be, be in excess of that. These are some surveys that show the proposed or calculated fees for the county versus your current fees. So you're at, at 7,900, the calculated fees brings you to about 13,000, which is much more in line with the average around the region and the state. The, I broke out some additional surveys for some of the specific fees that were increasing a significant amount. So looking at the single-family impact fees for school boards or the school impact fees around the state, the orange is the current fee. So out of these survey identities, the county was at the bottom of the survey. The proposed fee in 2021 is in the red there, so that's what you could have adopted in 2021. And then the green is what we're calculating for the county this year. So it puts you up, but you're, you're comparable. It's not a fee that, you know, really, we like to look at these surveys. No one wants to be at the top, no one wants to be at the bottom. You want to be somewhere in between, but it also gives you confirmation that other counties are calculating and charging similar fee levels for their services. This is transportation, your current fee is in that yellowish-orange color, and then the green shows the proposed recalculated fee.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Are we allowed to go past 100% on any of these categories?
No, you, you, this is, the 100%, it's, until you perform another impact fee study, this new 100% is the.
I thought that was the answer, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
No problem. This is the multifamily transportation fee, so that one was increasing a fair amount, but you can see that the current and proposed, the yellow and green, and then retail, commercial transportation, impact fees. And then the next steps is the commission to consider the updated schedule of impact fees as presented for adoption, and the publicly noticed workshops are required for the extraordinary circumstances. I believe this completes that requirement. Before you collect any new impact fees, you have to send notice out to the community 90 days in advance of the effective date. So there's that kind of a lead-up period that you give to developers. And we recommend at least every four years for the county to consider updates to their impact fee schedule, and sooner if significant changes happen in the county, sometimes you could push it out if things seem like they're not changing as much or held constant, so. That, that's the conclusion of the impact fee presentation.
Well, I'm just going to say it out loud. My concern is when you have these big reductions in age-restricted, it incentivizes developers to come in and build age-restricted.
There is, um, there's nothing that the, saying that the county can't do away with that land use category, essentially, in your impact fee schedule. I've had clients in counties, cities that don't have that subcategory. So there was something in the past where the county decided that we want to make sure that the fees are different for age-restricted, single-family units. You could just have an all-encompassing, single-family class. All single-family housing units would pay this fee regardless if it was low-income, age-restricted, et cetera. It's really, it's a policy decision at the county level that you could have these subcategories and and provide, you know, differently calculated fees for different types of single-family, or you could just have one all-encompassing, single-family fee.
And I guess it's probably, is there, our administrative regulation, it's not a state requirement on, but on the low income, do we set that, or is that set at the state, like the 80% AMI? And then if we do that, and and somebody with low-income, single-family housing, they come in and build, they have to maintain it for 10 years, and if they sell prior to 10 years, then they have to reimburse for the full amount? Is that, it's, it's something specific to Citrus, is that correct?
I think the calculation is based on what Peter was saying, there's, there's a state calculation. I, I don't know the 10-year rule as far as ownership, I can dig into that before the 1 o'clock meeting, if that's something that we've, that we've put upon ourselves, or if that's, uh, if there was some other.
State.
Yeah, some other.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kennard.
Uh, just a quick question, I'm not sure if it's for you or for legal, but my, I had a concern about the significant increase in the, um, uh, impact fees for multifamily housing. We have a, uh, we have quite a shortage of that here in the county already. Increasing that impact fee on them likely shuts down any proposed projects, or at least delays them significantly. But I think what I heard you say is that if we wanted to decrease the cost recovery in any of these, that we shouldn't do it to just one land use category because that would open us up to litigation, or possible litigation, that if we wanted to decrease that cost recovery, we should do it across the board for all of the land use categories. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Or, or for what you, what the county could also consider is that for one of the fees, you could adopt a lower cost recovery as long as it was across, the same across land use categories.
Okay.
The one thing that we just advise against doing, it doesn't mean you can't do it, it just, you know, could potentially be a risk, is that adopting different cost recoveries for different categories is, is more risky. So you could do one across the board for one fee, say, of a, pick a specific fee, this is going to be at 50% cost recovery as long as it's across the board.
Sure, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have another question, so it may be more directed at, Eric, are you, I'm not sure. So on the multifamily age-restricted, talk to me about if somebody came in with a live-local act on that, would they pay impact fees on the live-local?
I'm not sure. I'd have to, I'll have to look into that, maybe Eric knows the answer to that.
My understanding is if you pull a permit, then you pay an impact fee regardless.
So my concern, Board, if somebody does come in and they do a live-local, they're going to have a very reduced impact, plus on top of that, they're going to have, a large portion of it could come off of the tax rolls for 30 years. So we're, you're having these impacts on both sides, you know, you're, they're going to come in, you're not going to collect an impact fee, plus you're not going to collect taxes. And so you've got this impact that, that they're not going to pay for at all, and you're going to have, you're going to absorb that in with the rest of the taxpayers.
But you would pay an impact fee if you pull a permit, then.
But a very reduced impact fee.
Yes, yes.
I think the only, the only option, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I think the only option, and it's, it's certainly going to discourage any, um, uh, low-income housing development, would be, as he suggested, with the age-restricted community, single-family homes, would be to do away with that land use, uh, that specific land use on here, and then everything would fall into either multifamily or, um, or single-family homes. That would, that would essentially do away with the reduced impact fee of a live-local act project, that every unit in there then would pay the, either a single-family home or, or the multifamily.
Commissioner Barrick.
If I'm reading this correctly, there is no school impact fee on the age-restricted, single-family, and there's no impact fee on the multi-age-restricted. That, to me, seems exactly the way it should be because it's supposed to be 55-plus community. And if we're trying to get housing for our senior citizens who are being priced out of their houses by property taxes and insurance taxes and car, you know, they're having to leave, we are supposed to be hopefully getting some apartment complexes for 55-plus, who should not have to pay school taxes. So when I look at these columns and I see we got, you know, nothing, 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 it makes sense to me because they are not putting kids in our schools. But yes, they are on our roads, and it shows that they are paying their transportation taxes and all the others. Now, we're not going to be able to accommodate every type of citizen that comes to this county and make it comfortable for everybody. But we do have citizens here that are in need of 55-plus apartments. And Inverness saw that, or Crystal River has that complex opening up soon, which is nice. But we need a few more of those. Okay? I also see that, you know, I don't like the large charge for our Habitat people because they're struggling enough to just get into a house and be a consistent taxpayer and have a place for a family, you know? So I can see doing something with that one to get some sort of tax relief for the low-income, for the impact fees on the low-income. But it has to be a guaranteed low-income for, like, I think Habitat has a 10-year minimum that they have to live by. And I think it's a standard that it's not just Habitat. I think it's a state or government standard that they have to be there a certain amount. So I appreciate what you put into this. This has been a lot of work, and it came out very nice. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Sure. I am feeling rather discouraged that it sounds like we can't do what I talked about, which is make sure that we can get more multifamily built without engendering a lawsuit. That's basically what you're saying. Is there any way through this to whether it's changing some of the land use categories or whatnot to be able to, for example, multifamily, age-restricted, if that could be age-restricted slash low-income, that's a very, that would bring those down to a reasonable impact fee for multifamily dwellings?
I was going to say, I don't want to speak out of turn. I'm not 100% sure on this. But I'm pretty sure that a county, city, municipality can, has the discretion to waive impact fees for specific projects in the same way tax abatements are discussed and agreed upon, negotiated. I think impact fees can be waived in the same way for specific projects, but the risk more is adopting schedules that reflect certain favoritism and, you know, artificially depressing fees for certain land use categories. Not advisable. But I think on a project-to-project basis, if there are certain developments that were interested in coming into the county, that you wanted to encourage those specific developments, I believe that that's an option open to the county. But...
Okay. I'm going to need firm confirmation on that by this afternoon.
Yeah, I would defer to the legal.
I have my notes for research, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Because as of right now, multifamily is just over 7,000. Multifamily, age-restricted, is just over 2,000. So how in the world are they going to be able to build apartment complexes or quadplexes or duplexes for working 20-somethings, you know, that can afford? So it's just difficult. Thank you.
Commissioner Finnegan? Do you have anything? Commissioner Barrick.
When I look at the multifamily and the multifamily, age-restricted, the thing you have to remember is multifamily, younger people are going to need more than a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom apartment. They're going to need either a three or a four. Okay? If you look at the complexes that are going up in Crystal River, they're either a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom because there are no children involved. There are no, you know, it's just two people or one person. So I can see the difference, you know, when they give the numbers. And that's where, you know, I think it's a decent amount.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
At this time, we're going to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward. You will have three minutes, and we ask you to state your name and your address, please. Gaston, are you on record? Do you get five?
Nope, I'm three.
Three, okay. Thank you.
I gave you a list of questions that have been asked through the process and still haven't gotten answered to.
Name to you, name?
Floyd Gaston Hall III, 2200 West Stretre Lane, La Canto, Florida.
Thank you.
So it doesn't appear to us that the study that's been done, has done a local study most recent in the last 12 months. Using, I listed up some of the stuff that I found right in the report that was listed there. The table between the existing deficit and impact fees has not been shown anywhere. They don't take the number of, we've got a deficit right now. Everybody knows we have a deficit on all the roads. So that has not been deducted from the number. There's no chart, graph, or information on that. Comparing Citrus County to the surrounding counties and even a lot of counties, we are, they're not growing any slower than we are. They're growing faster and faster than we are. So the difference of trying to go to 100% immediately should not be based on that we're doing something different than everybody else, or we're expanding faster than anybody else. Go around the state and look. There's a lot of places that are beating us number-wise, percentage-wise. I could not find anywhere in the impact fee codes or statutes that you can go over 100%. So adopting schools at 157%, I'd like to see where that statute says you're allowed to go over 100%. We could not find it, and several other people that looked could not find it. So if it's going to go over 100%, then I would like to see the statute that allows the county to do that. There's, I could not find anywhere in the report too that says the charges for collection for administrative that were just actual costs, and there wasn't anything else added to it. There was nothing in there about that, about what you've collected, what the county has charged for the collection of those impact fees. It should be just cost-only. It can't be, you know, inflated by anything. There was no record of that anywhere. And it still appears to me that we are not in compliance with the statute that governs impact fees. There are several things that are missing here that aren't there. There are several things that have been added that aren't covered. So if you look at the entire state statute and read it, there's a lot of things that they're doing that aren't allowed in the state statute, aren't covered. Any questions?
Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon. Good morning, I should say. My name is Lynn Harris. The address is 714 South Scarborough Avenue, La Canto Highway, Florida 34461. Dear Chairwoman, Bays, and County Commissioners, my name is Lynn Harris. I am the president of the Realtors Association of Citrus County, an organization representing hundreds of real estate professionals committed to protecting property rights, promoting homeownership, and supporting the responsible growth of our communities. Our mission is clear, to be the voice of real estate in Citrus County. And today I'm here to share the voice of our membership regarding the proposed increase to the impact fees. We conducted a recent survey, and the feedback is compelling. 68% of our members believe that affordable housing should be included in some way of the impact fees to increase, to avoid further harming accessibility and affordability. 14% support the proposed increase as presented. 45% do not support any increase at all. And 42% support an increase, but only at a moderate rate. This is not about just percentages. It's about the people. Citrus County is at a crossroads. These fees are directly affecting housing affordability, development sustainability, and the local economy. For every dollar added to construction costs, the dreams of homeownership moves further out of reach for our workforce, our young families, and our aging population. These changes can potentially lead to builders to pause the projects, to cause the buyers to back out, and potentially create a ripple effect that touches every corner of our community, including our workforce, our economy, and growing population. We are urging you to take a measured balance and a strategic approach, one that acknowledges our county's infrastructure needs, and while preserving opportunities for attainable housing. This includes pursuing a more moderate increase and ensuring affordable housing should be somewhat included somehow. On behalf of the Realtors Association of Citrus County, I thank you for your time, your relationship, and your careful consideration of this issue that will shape the future of our community. And we know the stress and scrutiny each of you are constantly placed under. So thank you for your energy, your time, and the work that you lead Citrus County forward. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
I'm Renee Bedford from Flow City, Florida. When you're talking about the impact fees that you collect, all I hear is that they're going to be put towards future developments. To main, what about the maintaining what we have now? Impact fees are property taxes included, am I right?
No.
No? That's just, what about the fire, EMS? This is just for businesses?
The impact fees are for new development. That's it.
So that's what they pay to get a business started?
No. It's, if you look at the...
So we, the residents that live here now are paying to have new businesses?
No. This would be charged if somebody was building a new single-family, a new multifamily, a new commercial development. This is for all brand-new construction.
Okay. So you raise those fees, and you also raise property taxes?
No.
No? I'm just trying to understand this whole...
No. Property taxes are property taxes. This is strictly an impact fee for new development.
Okay.
This is to eliminate the burden. If we don't, if we can't pay for these things with new growth, then we have to take it out of general revenue. We have to fund it somehow. So what you do with impact fees is try to get the new development, the new...
The new to pay for the new?
Exactly.
I got you. Okay. And the roadway acquisition for 491, that was paid for, I have it on the 2021 Les Cook Budget. To answer your question, Kennard, about the land acquisition, I wrote it down and then I lost it. It was paid for through a grant, I believe, 14 million dollars? It was supposed to be paid for the land acquisition. I mean, I have a write-up of all the impact fees, and all it's going to from 2001 to 2024, it's all going to debt services for County Road 491, County Road 49146, and South State Road 44. It's all debt service.
That's what impact fees do.
That's it?
When you have an expansion of a roadway, the impact fees allow us to expand that road, and then you can use the impact fees for the debt service.
Okay. So that's all for new roads. But what about the current roads?
That's on, that's how we pay for them, out of gas tax. We get some SCOP funding from the state, and then Advalorm.
Thank you.
Welcome. How are you?
Fine. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Pamela Taylor, and my address is 10 Oak Village Boulevard, Homer Sassa, Florida 34446. And this won't be long, but the specific item that we looked at for an impact fee increase, one of the items was transportation and the impacts of that. And I know that the gentleman is going to be getting back to you later today before you vote to come up with, I guess, components of whether or not it was included or not. And if it wasn't included, what all should be considered as to what those impacts would be. I can tell you from someone who's worked in transportation, right-of-way acquisition, for 36-plus years, that it's going to be a lot more than just acquiring the land and paying the attorneys. If there are any impacts as far as residential people being displaced, if there are any businesses that are going to be impacted by the right-of-way acquisition, even if there's just personal property belonging to private individuals, those items are going to have to be relocated. The people are going to have to be relocated. The businesses are going to have to be relocated. And it's, there's thousands, tens of thousands of dollars that are involved in that. So I'm hoping that whatever information you receive as it relates to the correct number, will factor in all of those components, and maybe some that I'm not even aware of. And I think the best place to get that information would be the Florida Department of Transportation. So I would hope that a detailed study would go into what all should be factored in to the transportation component of the increases. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Good morning. CJ Dixon, 1366 South Estate Point, Inverness, Florida 34450. Great presentation where we are. And I know it's, I'm not belittling the presentation, but you're restricted by state law, number crunching, all this stuff. And, you know, you have to present what you're presenting. And it was very impactful as far as what's required by law, what we can, what we can't do. But I'm kind of a little different. I'm looking at what are, what are your goals in the impact fees as our leaders? Are you for growth in the future? Are you for slower growth in the future? Are you for housing affordability? Because what you adopt of these numbers is a trade-off of all those three. If you take higher impact fees, you're going to slow growth. Higher impact fees hurt affordability across the board. You can see this if we raised them to a ridiculous level. If you did a $100,000 impact fee, we know there would be no growth. There would be no affordability. There'd be no new homes, and we'd get no money in. If you bring it down to a ridiculously low level, like a zero, you know that we would be the best county to start building in, and we'd have builders coming in here and people coming in here for the affordability, and we'd have a lot of growth. So that's one. And I'm kind of seeing where you guys are at. Are you more for slowing the growth we've seen? Are you for increasing the growth we've seen, trying to keep it level? Because what I saw on those charts was really in the last four years, our housing permits have decreased. Now, I know you would say over the last 10 years, since '21, they're up some certain percent. But if you look at that chart, the last four-year block actually had a decrease, if you drew the average line. Improved property also increases our tax base forever. So where is the break-even point? You collect a $6,000, $5,000, $8,000 impact fee, or... You collect a six thousand, five thousand, eight thousand dollar impact fee, or someone does not build that home, and you get the revenue from a unimproved lot, a vacant lot forever of a couple hundred dollars or a couple thousand dollars on improved house? Are you looking at the short-term costs of growth, not looking at the long-term tax revenue base that's been increased forever? And I don't know where that break-even point is. I'm guessing five years. I'm sure the math is different for each kind of thing that's built. So, I'm really looking at what the, what the board is looking at, and I'd love to hear your opinion, whether you're for, well, before I say that, there's also ways you can pull out the categories, and I heard some of you say that we're for the older population and affordability, we're for the workforce affordability. So, can we move those around? And I hope you would be nimble, oops, nimble like that in making your decision. All right, thanks.
Good morning. My name is Katrina Letourneau. I'm the president of the Citrus County Building Alliance. And without repeating what others said, because I know that you take what everybody says into consideration and not take up too much of your time, I just wanted to notate a couple of concerns. First was the fact that today's report had many inconsistencies that were not in the report that we received. So, we didn't have the sufficient time to look over the report that they provided today. There were some inconsistencies that I think all of you guys noticed. So, that was a little bit disheartening. Secondly, the consultant wasn't here for the first workshop. So, any questions that we had, you know, when that workshop took place, we're not getting to, you know, ask or look into until today. So, that was also disheartening. Ms. Barrett, you said that you don't want our senior citizens to be priced out, but my concern with this increase is that we're pricing out our workforce. We have a huge issue right now. We tend to focus on low-income housing, and yes, we do need that, and then we focus on the senior housing, and I agree that we need that. But this is, the problem that we're really experiencing in our county is affordable housing for our workforce community. And unfortunately, these impact fees, I know we can't give, you know, consolidations to everybody, but these impact fees would directly affect that community. We need to be encouraging our workforce to be here and live here and work here, and I don't think that this added fee is going to go along the lines of encouraging. I, the Building Alliance, we understand that, you know, it takes money to do things. We understand that costs have to increase sometimes, but we just hope that you'll do that in a conservative approach. There are things that have been done in the past that have been done methodically, such as phased implementation, and we would ask that maybe you would consider some kind of phased implementation process and give, there are other projects that have offered credits for local or small-scale builders that have been done in the past. Also, the multifamily housing is extremely concerning. We already have an issue with that for, specifically for our workforce. People, investors don't want to come in, they don't want to build those apartment complexes as it is, because the, the cost to build a single apartment is extremely high, and adding these costs would kind, it would essentially price them out. So, we are concerned that we would run into even bigger issues with that. The, and then the last point is that we continue to say that because of inflation, costs have increased. I, I know that raising mileage rates are a very big and hard choice to make, but I also don't understand why we're saying there's such a dire need to raise the impact fees to, you know, make up for the costs that we're not getting for the new development, but the people who are living here and the maintenance fees that the impact fees don't cover are good. I don't understand how we can say that the impact fees are not appropriate, but the ongoing fees are. Perhaps a study into those fees needs to be done as well, just to make sure that we're keeping up with those rates appropriately, and then we could perhaps have a more conservative all-around approach rather than what feels like a very harsh increase to one sector. Anything?
Thank you, Katrina.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Attorney, Clerk, Josh Wooton, President and CEO of the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce. I want to start by saying that we understand the dilemma that y'all have, huge needs and finite resources. So, we're going to start with that. We, we certainly realize you need to raise impact fees in multiple categories. However, you've heard over and over again today, you, you guys need to take affordable housing seriously. It's, it's a crisis in our community, it's a crisis across the state, and if you have an opportunity to incentivize that, not just for the seniors, which we support, Ms. Barrett, we do, but we don't have adequate workforce housing. What about the twenty-five-year-old bartender that wants an apartment? Or a nursing assistant that wants to share an apartment with somebody? They just don't exist. So, we would hope that y'all would look at that today by one o'clock and see if there's a way that you could tweak those multifamily numbers. The fifty-five and up, I, I didn't know that was a county ordinance. That's interesting, because what if you did charge this full-impact fee to that category? Would that then lower it across the board for everybody else, because you're bringing in new revenue? I'd like to see the consultant answer that question. That'd be very interesting to me. I think that people moving into Terravista and Black Diamond wouldn't care if they paid an extra twenty-five hundred dollars to help our schools. I'm not seeing that. And then if we have a, as Ms. Barrett stated, if we have a category for fifty-five and up, then we, the consultant just told you, which is what I was hoping to hear, is that you can tweak that or make special concessions to handle things that we need. The seven thousand dollars per retail, there's, I got two questions there. Is that per thousand square feet? Because that's mind-boggling if it is. Or is it per unit? I don't know how that works. That would kill small mom-and-pop entrepreneurs. And also, we all want infill to these old buildings. I'd like to know how the impact fee works if you change the use. That's concerning. And then on the fire and EMS, did y'all credit the fact that we got a $3.5 million fire station before, after that study was completed, and would that lower any of the fees there? And then 491, I mean, look, I think Commissioner Cardy has something on the agenda later about 491. Where do we go? We need to go all in somehow. We, we're not going to get anything done unless we start designing it, but we'll talk about that after one o'clock. Thank you for putting that on the agenda. And this year in Tallahassee, we should all go up united, you know, with our messaging and our road, our road issues and transparency, you know? We'll, we'll all go up there, I hope, holding hands and try to get some revenue in here, because I think that the legislature and the citizens see that y'all are trying to get your hands around all these issues. Thank you.
Commissioner Finnegan?
There was a very good question he just asked, and I want the answer. So, I don't, so if I could interrupt for a second, pardon me, sir. I want to know that, too, what Josh had said about, he's correct. We do not want in our county these old dilapidated buildings, and we would love infill, take these buildings that we have and put something fantastic there. Is that a lower impact fee? Because I think that would be really, a really great incentive. Instead of building a brand-new building, get into a building that we have, so we don't have, you know, blight and slummy places.
I've only seen impact fees charged if they're adding to or adding on that building, but I haven't seen impact fees charged if it's just a land use change or if it's not a currently utilized building, and it's, then a new business moves in. I haven't seen that.
Joanna, yes, so if the business is a different business?
Yeah, there's no impact fee for a change in occupancy. That only comes if they're expanding in commercial, not re, not residential. You've got a two-bedroom, you had a bedroom, there's no impact fee. We also have in our zoning ordinance where you're tearing down an old place and putting in a new, we have some incentives there for, really from zoning, some of the criteria like landscapes and buffers and parking, et cetera.
So, if a office building changes to a restaurant that may have more traffic, they're not paying additional impact fees?
They do not. We are going to look at parking, but as part of their permit, it's a change in occupancy permit. But no, there's no impact fee unless they decide to expand.
That's helpful. Thank you.
No worries.
Good question. Sorry, sir.
And the impact fee would only be on the expansion amount?
Perfect. Thank you.
Hello, Paul Darty, 3481 West King B Street. There was an emphasis on impact fees, the amount we're paying, and the types of things we're paying it for. Everybody is pretty much acknowledging we're going to have growth. A lot of this growth is going to be high density or higher density than this county is used to. We had things talked about with roads, we had them talked about minorly with other things, but kind of like the elephant in the room, I haven't heard a thing about water and wastewater. These come with growth. How does the county plan to use impact fees for those? Because when you get this higher-density growth, you have to have water infrastructure, you have to have wastewater infrastructure, and they cost plenty. I didn't hear a word of discussion about this anywhere. If there's something else in the county budget that this is for, it should be brought out now, so we all know how this impact is going to be paid for. Thank you.
Mrs. Barrett, or Commissioner Barrett, I'm sorry.
When I sat here a few minutes ago, and I, I said some things. If we are building apartment buildings fifty-five plus, that's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom. If we're building affordable, it's probably three-bedroom, four-bedroom. I can build two fifty-five-plus apartments in the space it takes one affordable. That means the impact fees for the two, because it's per unit, would be fourteen thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars, as opposed to one affordable would be nine thousand three hundred and ten, if everything is the way it's supposed, because it's per building unit, per housing unit. So, in reality, the fifty-five-plus, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, we will make money in impact fees. Now, impact fees for the lady from Floral City, it's for brand-new building. You pay it when you buy a brand-new house, not your property taxes. Okay? So, and I, and I think that's where some people, it took me a while also when I started coming to the meetings, and a lot of times it's not a hundred percent to everybody, you know, everybody knows what's going on, but it's nice that you come to the meeting to learn. Okay? The other thing is, impact fees are a one-time thing, they're charged to the builder or the person building the house. Just remember, when a house is completely built, the first year, there are no property taxes until it comes on a tax roll. So, the impact fees also have to, you have to consider it's taking away the property tax for that first year. So, when we say, you know, yeah, the builder's going to have to pay more to build a house, that's true, but guess what? They're going to send it to the person that's buying a house. And a person buying a house, if they really want that house, they will pay what the builder or developer is asking. So, you have, you want truth and transparency? You need to start looking behind the hidden doors. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. My name's Chuck Sanders, Sanderson Bay Fine Homes. I, I am at 1940 North Prospect Avenue in La Canto. A couple observations that I've seen here this morning is some conflicts in some of the numbers that, that you're going to vote on, I guess, at one o'clock. That's concerning to me. I hope you are not wanting to railroad this through without considering, you know, getting the proper numbers in front of you. I also want to thank two of the five Commissioners for responding to an email that I sent. Didn't get response from the other three, and I was really hoping that the lady that represents me in my district would have responded, but she didn't. Couple other observations. As a builder, daily, daily, I watch leads come into this, into our system. Okay? We market this county as a builder. We spend a lot of time, energy, and effort marketing Citrus County. And this study, in my opinion, is based on what I call the COVID boom. It happened nationwide. Okay? People made movements throughout the country because their companies said, hey, you know, social distancing, we don't need you in a building. Many companies still, to this day, have people working from their home or their yacht or wherever they're at. So, there was a movement throughout the country, and we experienced that. But I can tell you, in the last twelve months, there has been a significant decrease in leads. People are leaving the state. You've read about it. Let's not ignore it. They're getting out of here. They, they don't, whether it's the heat, the expenses, the taxes. Our school superintendent recently admitted that there's a decrease in school attendance or population. A lot of it is the interest rates at seven, eight percent, if you got good credit. So, you know, in my particular business, I, we're slow. It's not happening. Now, as we've studied this impact fee several times, I've lived here fifty years, been building for twenty-five. It's, it's a national numbers, and I'm being general here, but when a, a new home sells, the direct effect in the economy is about fourteen to fourteen and a half percent. Carpenters, drywallers, air-conditioned people. Okay? The indirect effect, though, is huge. It's, it's over thirty percent, because those people, when they move in, they're going to buy a local car, use a local doctor, buy local groceries. Okay? So, I look at a new home as kind of the goose that lays the golden egg, and I hope you don't kill it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, close the Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Barrett? Oh, five minutes?
Yeah, I'm Chuck Dixon. I'm here to speak on behalf of the school board. And I was here five years ago when we updated the impact fees. I'm the only other person that loves to update the impact fees almost as much as you do. So, I realize that the data has to be updated every five years so that it can be based on the most current available information. And I remember from that time, and the five years before that, and the five years before that, and the five years before that, back three decades, I've been doing this. And we always hear the same thing, that impact fees are going to slow growth and cause a problem, but that never happens. And the fact is, we need to think about, think about where we're going to be five years from now, and what kind of options are we going to have to deal with the growth that we could have between now and then? Because if you think back five years ago, it was all gloom and doom, and the Suncoast Parkway was just opening. But now, we have an access on 44. Five years from now, we're going to have one on 486 and one on 495, and eventually US-19. So, the growth pressure's not going to go away. We've got Cardinal Node, which is less than an hour from the Tampa Airport. We've got Tuscany, which is very close to Ocala, Marion County. We've got a lot on the horizon that we're going to have to deal with, and we don't know. We've got a lot on the horizon that we're going to have to deal with, and we don't know what the future holds. With the schools, we've got to be flexible. We've got to have the ability to meet the current needs, but also plan for the future. And we, some of us recently went down to Pasco County to look at the metro project down there. And they have a, in close proximity, a public school, a charter school, a private school, and a county-owned recreational facility. So we have to plan for that kind of arrangement here because it's very likely that in a few years, we'll be competing with charter schools that we don't have in Citrus County yet. But they will be able to tap impact fee money if they're built to ASREF standards. So I think it's important that we have the best options for the people of Citrus County. And I just wanted to bring that forward for your public hearing and your consideration.
Thank you. Chuck? Anyone else? All right, we're going to close open to the public. Board? You have any further comments?
We have a lot of answers that we need before 1 o'clock, so I, I suggest we get moving. Let staff come up with them.
Well, I hope to see you all at, at the 1 o'clock meeting because I think there'll be more answers and a lot more questions.
Oh, and Madam Chair, I think I have, I think I found the, it's, if you want the Florida statute on impact fees, it's 163 dot 31801, which is what I will be reading forthwith.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Canard?
Uh, let's see. Mr. Dixon got up and asked, you know, where the board is at if we're trying to slow growth or increase growth or, you know, where our position's at. While I certainly can't speak for the entire board, I can speak for myself. And that is that we're trying to get to a place where the growth, as close as we can, get the growth paying for itself. You know, neither slowing it down or speeding it up, but one of the most challenging parts of this job is trying to, trying to stretch the funds, limited funds, that this board has to get ahead of the growth or at least keep up with the growth in our infrastructure across the board. And, you know, with the fire services, law enforcement, naturally, transportation, our parks, and the funds that are there right now simply are not covering it. We are, as Josh mentioned earlier, we are going to talk this afternoon about the next steps with 491. Commissioner Bays mentioned, you know, the numbers there are just crazy to widen that road. Now, whether those are real numbers or government numbers, we don't really know that just yet. But it looks like just simply adding, adding a full signal to the Hampshire intersection there on 491 is, carries about a million and a half-dollar price tag. That takes an awful lot of impact fee payments to cover just that one signal. That's not widening the road. That's just making that intersection safe for existing residents to travel through there. So my position, long, long answer, long-winded answer, my position is we've got to get closer to having this growth, whether that growth is infill or that growth is new developments that are coming, that growth has got to be able to pay for some of these infrastructure improvements. And as we talked about, and as, as our consultant mentioned, and thankfully, the one lady from the public, thank you for coming up here and mentioning all of these other associated fees that may not even be calculated. We don't know yet. Hopefully, we'll know more by 1 o'clock or our time we discuss it this afternoon. But there may be a nu, a number of expenses that weren't even included in their, their cost estimation for building out the roads. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, this transportation impact fee may very well be woefully below actually where it should be going into this. Not looking to, to raise it any more than what's proposed, but I'm just saying it's, we're not keeping up. And each, each day, each new permit that's issued, we're falling further and further behind.
Commissioner Barrett?
Well, as I listened to the citizens, one of them said something about the fact that the moderate housing, you know, 42% were okay with the moderate raise in the impact fees. Well, 45% weren't. Well, I'm thinking about it this way. With all the building that we've been doing, why haven't more affordable houses been built? That's not my fault. That's the developer's fault. That's the builder's fault. The affordable housing should be here because it's not that, you know, you're trying to make more money. That's all there is to it. You want to make as much money as possible. So the thing is, why don't we have the affordable houses already here? Why don't we have the 55-plus apartment buildings for the seniors where they actually live? Where there is transportation, where they have proximity to shopping instead of where we are building, you know, to get to the grocery store from where we're going to be opening this building in Crystal River? If you've got no transportation, you're going to have to have delivered groceries. Is that really affordable? So the thing is, we as a board have to look at what, what we can do and what we can't, and what we can control and what we can't control. And one of the things is, we can increase the impact fees currently, which had been dropped years ago and then slowly brought back. And that's the thing, they have been slowly brought back. And at this point, I know we need to do something for the current citizens and for incoming citizens. And if we don't get the impact fees up to where they belong, we cannot actually say to the new citizens coming in, hi, we've got a wonderful county for you. Because we don't have the funds through property taxes to pay for all the things that are needed for every citizen.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Davis?
One very brief comment that we might consider before the 1 o'clock. Age restricted is given a tax, is given a break. The point is not age, the point is income. Was it Commissioner Canard that said, referenced Black Diamond, Antigua Vista, and so forth? It was, or someone referenced it in any regard. We want to protect those that need affordable, attainable, and workforce housing. It really has nothing to do with age. And I just shot myself in my, in the foot if I ever want to build a new home by saying that.
I'll just give some final thoughts. I know everyone's concerned about workforce coming to Citrus County, myself included. But I think there's different ways that people look at it. Some say, you know, from a building perspective, that the impact fees, if you raise them, that's going to deter new workforce housing. Another view of that is, would it deter that workforce if we raise our taxes? Because things have to get paid for one way or another. So do we have the people putting the impact there and go ahead and get the impact fees? Or do we have to spread taxes to everyone to accommodate that new growth? I think most of our citizens would say the first rather than the latter would be the most fair for everyone that lives here. My personal thoughts for affordable housing, why, why isn't more here? Because I think when you look at the surrounding area and state of Florida as a whole, Citrus County still looks pretty affordable. Maybe not to some people here, as we've seen the cost rise, but I'm saying from a more state perspective, Citrus County looks more affordable. When we talk about our workforce and younger families coming, not only to move here but to stay here, the children that we're raising, why do they want to stay? A lot of them move away and see something different because we're going to want to have adequate schools when they want a family. We want the expansion of parks. We, we want adequate EMT and fire services, and God help us, law enforcement. Because, side note, disturbingly, I just watched a national television, a show on Discovery Channel last night, a show highlighting Citrus County as the meth capital of the world. So, yeah, we, we don't want that. When we talk about our young families and our workforce, we want a very safe, beautiful, well-thought-out community for them not just to, to get a job and, and say, I got to get out of here, to get a job and stay with us. We want to build community here. So that is why I am in support of the impact fees as presented.
Just final comments. If we look at the history of impact fees going back to '07, they've pretty much been at 50% or suspended. And the only time they got to 100% is we did an update in '23. And I haven't seen a decrease in building. And if you look at every other county, we're not seeing decreases. And if, and I would hope that you all would take a look at the metro forecasting and see what's projected for up until 2035, what the growth is going to be. With the Suncoast Parkway coming through, if we go back in time, you have to, on transportation, you have to have a reliable transportation network to create economic opportunity. And if there's one thing that we're missing, we're missing a diversified revenue and a diversified economy in, in Citrus County. We are so heavily residentially burdened that that's why the residents feel the struggle. We've got to have other businesses here. We're seeing some retail come in, but we want those higher-wage jobs. We want more professional workforce. So we have to build, there's various components to building that scale of economy. And, you know, and I hear you. I mean, I hear you in the audience, and some of you want a staged approach, you want different impacts, but then you have the other residents that are screaming, we don't want any more growth, and we want you to charge us impact fees. So it's a careful balance what we're, what we're working through here. Questions that I would like answered was the 3.5 million state appropriation calculated into this fire station or the fire in here. What are we doing about water, wastewater? Is there something that we're missing there? Because I know we're going to have to expand some capacity. I know that's an enterprise zone, but is, should it be on new, new development? And for the last part of transportation, probably for a year or more, you've heard me talk about corridor study alignments. Those are coming out of ad valorem. And I can tell you the one for 491 right now, that's a million dollars. We need them on 495. We need it on Rock Crusher Venable. We're going to need it, I don't know if I said Cardinal or 495. We need them on every single one of those. And almost every single one of those are going to cost a million dollars. But what it does do for us, it helps us do those alignments and get that set aside for the future capacity issues in our comp plan that helps us save money on the things that the lady just talked about on the right-of-way acquisition. We've got to get ahead of these developments before they come. We don't want people building in these right-of-ways where we know we're going to need future capacity. We already can look ahead when Mrs. Joanna Katu puts, look what's coming. We know what's coming in some of the, the future stuff that, that's being brought to us. Whether it happens five years from now or 10 years from now, it's still going to happen. And we can look back at our transportation impact fees and some of the impact fees, it's not keeping pace. And the struggle is that then we have to put it into the ad valorem to keep up. And then you're not happy with this on that side. And I think Commissioner Finnegan laid that out pretty well. It's a balance, and it's a fine line that we're working here, and we hear you on both sides. We hear you when it comes to transportation impact fees. But I would, what I struggle with and what I really wish we had is I wish we had an economist that would come in and take, look at our current inventory and talk about supply and demand. Because if we had, if we could look at a, at a visual from an economist's standpoint on supply and demand, would, if we had more housing, would it help us with rent controls because we had a better inventory? I don't know the answer to that, but it makes me wonder what that would look like. And would some of the higher-priced, I should say, some of the older houses that are garnering these, what I call, large price tags on sale, would those numbers that I feel are artificially high, would those start to retract? So again, we're, we're going to see housing and commercial development. We just don't know the timeframe, whether, we don't know what's going to happen to the economy, but it does not change the fact, fact that all of these things, just like parks, we need to do a major investment in our parks because we want families, we want kids. We want to change part of the demographics of who we are and where we're going. So I'm going to end there. I really hope that you all will take the time to come back at the 1 o'clock meeting and be part of the conversation. We need, we need you. We need you at the table. We appreciate you being here, and we want to hear from you, and we want to hear your concerns, and we want to work with you. So thank you for being here. We are adjourned.